But there are also some things that are super hidden that I am suggesting to remove. And so.
So you're saying this is new as of now or new as of two thousand seventeen? I was confused.
As of now, yes.
Okay.
And so I guess just to kind of take a step back and talk about why this is in front of you, what the ask is about you tonight. We have, the current bylaws were adopted, like you said, in twenty seventeen. When we go to adopt new bylaws, that original adoption date will remain. And as you can see on the top here, we got as of November through August thirteenth.
Day, first day.
And so, um, again, anything in red is something that I'm proposing as new text and straight through to remove. One of the biggest things I did with this update is just update the organization of it. And so adding the different section numbers, making it a little bit easier to point out, well, we're talking about section. Um, so just organizational updates. But then also, I'll just kind of go through briefly and then talk about it. Stop any of your questions. On the first page, this first set is really just what are the statutes that were already operating in there? But they're now in writing in your bylaws. Some things like planning an event, there's something we need to add, but also the township's zoning ordinance, as well as Robert's rules order, some things like how you're conducting the thing, need to motion the second, things like that. And we're not going to talk about Robert's rules tonight, but that's also something that in the future we can, in terms of training, help with making motions and just making sure that we're following with that. Um, so there's nothing too major on the first page. Second page mostly just has the three organizations, new number written. Um, and then once we get into the third page, that's where the delinquency comes up. And I think that it's a great, uh, point that you guys are all very committed in here as the zoning administrator. And so something that you might consider that you can do is strike township supervisor and replace that with township zoning administrator. So, or we could have it to the list and supervisor remains as a potential contact person. Um, but in reality, we know that in practice, you're talking with Karen, she's sending out the patents and whatnot. But in the future, if she was unavailable, we've got some other folks that can lead that kind of contact.
So should it be zoning administrator or township clerk? Cause that's her official duty is clerk. Or should we put both towards that?
I think the zoning administrator, they directly, um, do things with you guys. Or designate, if he's on the administrator or their design designate. But I think that.
For example, if you're gone, then George would step in and, and take your place, just as you would do for him.
Yes.
While he's absent.
Yes.
Right. Makes sense.
Yeah, I think the supervisor suggests appointments. I don't know what the correlation was there, but the zoning administrator is always usually.
Kind of controlled and, and structured and all that.
Right.
Yeah. Makes, that makes sense.
Yeah.
So it would make sense to add. I wouldn't take the supervisor out necessarily, I would just add the zoning administrator.
Yeah.
Definitely.
So we'll keep all the folks listed, just have township supervisor or township zoning administrator for their designate. I think that's great because, um, the township clerk may not always be the zoning administrator.
Correct.
Where it has. People have to have students.
Yeah.
Will you put on that blue hat, please? We need you to be the zoning administrator right now. Then you put the red one on after that, right?
And then, not to, the section B says without a valid excuse. I might assume that, I mean, almost anything is a valid excuse, right? This is just so a false, we decide we're not going to come anymore, that you're going to get rid of, right? Didn't know if we had to.
Gives the powers that be to.
I mean, I, I've never worried about this type of thing, but now you're writing this in writing, you know?
Well, it had to be in writing, we just haven't looked at it.
You know, it's, it's really just getting at, giving the township the opportunity, like you said, if there's someone regular and not showing up, they need to be able to fill that spot something.
Perfect.
And then additions in C and D. It's, with D, it's getting at what I just mentioned, which is how to blow up the moving up commissioner. It can give, um, and then.
So. The heading to me isn't, it mostly is delinquency. Um, but the last sentence that's still black really is not to do with delinquencies, if we want to get rid of them for other reasons. So either the heading should be delinquency and remove from office or something, or that should be a different heading, I think. Cause it doesn't deal with that issue.
Yeah, absolutely. We can, let's see, so.
The rest all has to do with delinquency, but the last line, which it needs to be in someplace, um, doesn't fit in that heading, really.
Right, so could be delinquency, you know, like you said, removal of.
From office or, yeah, something like that.
And if we want to remove someone, we don't do it, but how do we, how would you make that happen? I mean, who decides if that becomes a public hearing on the township boards? Well, somebody has to decide they're going to put it out of public hearing, right? So the board doesn't do that, you do that? So, was, as many days as you need, you can decide to get rid of any of us with a public hearing township board, they'll vote and that's it. Right? Okay.
Is that okay?
That's fine with me, yeah.
So, yeah.
I just want to understand the whole principle here.
Yeah, absolutely. And that's what we're here for.
Yeah.
It's not as though we can never undo things again, but we don't want to be doing it ever.
Sure.
Obviously, so, um, you know, I'm here to take your comments and, and they're very appreciated, so. And then, let's see, so for C, this addition is getting at talking about the commission secretary and their role in all of this stuff. Just was settled before, there wasn't any mention of that, you know, that was random. I'll also mention that a good deal of the new additions, section two point four training, for example, came from some model bylaws from, we shouldn't say university, they put out a lot of hand resources. And so, um, it's coming from best practice.
But your training right now counts as this, correct?
That for the future, yes, absolutely.
Yeah. Okay.
And so if we want to move to that section, this is something that, um, especially as the township continues to get easier, new development and new applications, having you guys equipped with the tools, the education that you need to make informed decisions will be really important. We've talked about, we've done some internal trainings here, but we have also shared, um, resources and trainings that you can do on your own. And so because it's already a practice, we wanted to have that in here and make sure that, uh, it continues to be a practice, right? Um, so any questions?
In, in the past, I think we were told by the township officials that they were encouraging us to take education and they would pay for it. But it does take time, so. There's probably a dollar limitation when you go to too many things, but I don't think any of us will be doing that.
Right.
Is there any documentation required, said, said we did that? I mean, obviously these meetings will show up in minutes, but if we do go off site, is that something we have to keep track of? Not that important?
Yeah. We would want to know about it and you would report it in your reports?
Yeah.
And that is part of the documentation?
Yeah, it would be part of that, that's enough, right?
Okay. Okay.
And, you know, with something like bylaws, we want to have enough direction on how we're operating, but we also don't want to be too descriptive where we're kind of painting ourselves into a corner. And so with this, I put on here that members show up attended at least two hours per year. So we did a training back in February, the first meeting of the year, which was, I would think at least forty-five minutes for at least an hour, right? That was a lot of work. That was the first kickoff, that was the first training for a lot of the new members. Tonight's training, like, we won't be in a full hour, but I can conference that as well. And again, what we're really trying to get at is making sure that when you come and enter here and you're asked to make decisions, that you're understanding ramifications of that, you have some background on. There are a lot of new technologies and practices and feel that you want to go training on green water, green stormwater infrastructure, things like, um, in previous pavement, you know, things that aren't necessarily very common in the township, but that we might be faced with, uh, again, working more applications. So, any other questions on training?
No, my question was, you answered it, I think it's plain that it doesn't have to be separate, it could be here at the meeting, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
So that's, I think, important to kind of realize that we don't have to go someplace else to get the training, as long as we get at least two hours.
Yes, and we want to move forward and start moving up, which is part of our regular meetings, right? So tonight, we're going to do a review of some slides that we've already moved up. This is a base training that I did in February, but because that was so long and it was so long ago, we want to do some review on key areas. And in the future, we might do a deep dive on, for example, some new state legislation about renewable energy. We've talked a little bit about that here, but, um, those are types of things that I, as the planner and township zoning administrator, can present to you. And so moving forward, this next session is really what we wanted to focus on with tonight. Both with bylaws and training, it's conflict of interest and incompatibility of office. And so with this session, I've added quite a bit of content on, especially the following page, we'll just move it over here. So some of it is just tweaking the language to be more specific. There was an existing conflict of interest section, but it was a little bit vague and left some room for interpretation. And so what I've done is, under the list of what counts as a conflict of interest, we're being more specific about, if there is one, you should not be issuing deliberating deliberately on, voting on, or reviewing a case if there is a conflict of interest. And there is this list of when does that an instance? So for example, if it's your own property that, of course, I'm getting a separate review for, that's a conflict. Um, if it's a case concerning a relative, um, you know, with this one, in a small town, that can be challenging sometimes because everybody knows one another, there's a lack of overlap. Um, and so we were specific about, it's really getting at immediate gamble numbers, not necessarily a second cousin or a third cousin, but, um, um, specifically when there's a financial interest in a property or in a business, um, when there is a financial interest in a new property, um, or if the, one of the new ones is reviewing a case, this is F, reviewing a case which is an action which results in curiary effect to the member. Or G, issuing deliberating on, voting on, or reviewing a case where the member's employee or employer is applicant or is, has direct interest in the home. So we wanted to be more specific here, um, and then moving down, it talks more about, in an instance, while we're having an interest, what happens, how, how do we deal with that? And so, and then also with the incompatibility of office, we had, um, previously our chair, he's now township board. Uh, we also had Mike as trustee, we can only have one township board liaison, and so it was a center that Mike was staying on. And, um, there just can't be, if a member is holding another office appointment to the commission, which is incompatible, just adding some language to it, it was just there.
So that wasn't in before, has it been a problem? I, you just want people on too many things that are kind of related, but I was surprised that limiting.
We just get to leave?
What do you mean by that?
Well, that you could, that you can only have one from the township board and you could only have something else that was in there, I can't remember what's. That's why we've done it before.
We don't know, we have anybody else, we're just an appointed representative board.
Having to put only one township board he's on is very standard practice, so. I don't know, it didn't even need to sleep on it because I don't think I've ever seen any board have more than.
We've used that before, but I didn't know whether it was in a rule someplace or not, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah. Now it is in the list, if we prove this.
Yeah.
Now, in the past, I think that was the same thing, I was a library board. Does that incompatible, would that be something, I could only be on this or the library board? There are two township boards, but they're quite different and don't overlap. And I couldn't tell here, I thought it looked like maybe I wasn't supposed to be, no, that was several years ago.
The library board you could, but you couldn't as far as our, is township board a part of our budget? We don't have any oversight with the library, so it would be an incompatible office.
That doesn't really say that in here, does it? Would seem like it's the two township offices. I don't know how to make, you know, I just didn't know that would have been my case before. And I, no, it wasn't an issue at the time, because I think I was on library board when I started on the planning commission, but.
Yeah, so. I mean, what we can do is specify which boards the township current has, would be considered that incompatible office. In the future, if a new board or commission is established, we might have to amend the bylaws in that case, but.
Tend to be, you want these to be broad, not too definitive, but I would think that would exclude me from being on township library and.
It says incompatible office.
Well.
And I think Karen covered pretty well, I mean, really, they don't, they don't vote on the money the library gets. So it says right there, which is.
The commission doesn't vote on anything for any of the other offices.
So I would think right there that incompatible office would pretty well cover the fact that.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
You know?
Okay, yep. We did have submit the budget to the township and it was part of the township. Thing, but we did the budget completely separate, it wasn't part of the township, didn't make the decisions on it.
Right.
Anyway, that's just, it just looked like it, it would be a question that you'd have if you're drinking.
You're okay.
Um, well, and then I guess, just to round out the conversation, we've also got in section two point five on ex parte contacts. Um, I think that the formatting got a little bit messed up here, but the large red text is intended to be under this. And so, again, in a small town, it can be very challenging to not write to applicants and, and folks when you're on the commission. Um, but this is really important so that we're not having, and we'll talk about this more in the training, side conversation with your side deals. It's, again, this is very standard practice to have in the bylaws, um, and so we don't have any questions if you guys have them on this. But the idea is that we're wanting to avoid further conflict of interest and any closed door decision making or conversations that might sway what should be unbiased.
See, I thought the open meetings act mainly did that, so I was kind of surprised this seems stronger. So if I saw Ben on the street after we leave and we talk about what happened here, not necessarily this, but I'm talking about a specific case, and he may know something because he's nearby or knows people about it that I would not know, so we're not supposed to discuss that at all?
So.
You're gonna talk about it in a few minutes anyway, but I just thought that, we need to go into depth, what's allowed and what's not allowed.
She thought two people is okay.
Yeah, and that's what I kind of thought from the open meetings act.
But it's a problem, there's three of us, right?
Three's too many.
Four.
So four makes four.
So if we, if we stand outside the door here tonight and we're done talking to you, we should be, we have to stand three or less, correct? I know there's.
Right. Six foot spacing.
Okay.
That's a good point, though, I see what you're.
Well, I just want to know what the limits are, because I would tend to, if I see Ray, I might discuss something, because he might, he, you know, in building and all that, he knows a lot more about things that I wouldn't necessarily know, so it might be clarifying something that we talked about or something. So is it a problem was, I guess, is the question, because it's hard to keep you mouth shut about everything, everybody.
Well, and, again, so really what this is trying to add is say you guys did have a side conversation, it was about the construction or the materials or something that Ray was more about, that should be related to the rest of the commission so that they also have that knowledge, right? And this also goes when discussing with applicants. That's kind of where my mind was going when I was writing this, is that, you know, we don't want a case where now we can't get a commissioner having it in a back room somewhere and that, that's what is your decision. Um, but.
But again, sometimes they would have details that didn't get brought out at the meeting and sometimes might be important. And that's, that's why we just wondered, how far can we go, or?
Yeah, and so the second piece here, where is the text large or is it just, so that would be completely.
So we'd actually make a report back to the board that if we did something like that, is the idea.
Exactly, and take notes on what was discussed because you're right, sometimes it's just.
So who would we turn the notes into? Because I had Jeff Yacabello was at my lumberyard the other day, actually, and two gardenhouses. And talked about seeing me at the meeting and talked about he wasn't going to make that at this month's meeting, because either he didn't get something in quick enough, something about George or something, so that's knowledge I have. So I should have turned that note in to Karen. I mean, it seemed pretty insignificant to me, I mean, we didn't really talk about anything too much, but, so, but I don't want to break the rules either. In case you're watching, we do record everything in our lumberyards. I could be, I don't know, I'd be in trouble. And I, I just, till you brought this, I wouldn't even worry about that, but theoretically, he was here last week. He'll be here, or last month, he'll be here next month, I mean.
Yeah, it's information I didn't know.
Was it?
You know, I mean, it's, it's significant, I mean, it's absolutely nothing we talked about at all. I mean, just the fact he wasn't going to be here. Right, so.
Well, you did mention that he wasn't going to be, you did mention he wasn't going, he told you he wasn't going to be the next meeting.
He wasn't going to be.
So it's a little bit towards that.
It is, I mean, I mean, theoretically, that was something about what was happening, and I, but, I mean, I'm, no big deal, but was that a big deal?
I don't think so, I, so, again, what the second piece is really getting at is making sure that that's related to the rest of the commission. When there's truly, you know, if you're talking to Jeff about, again, something totally unrelated, gardenhouses, we don't need that number. But if he had shared something further about the case, what this is getting at is, it says, reports of the commission at public meeting or hearing both sets that every member and other interested parties can be open there at both sets. So it's just about keeping the communication open, making sure everyone's on the same page, has the same information, because if there were discussions about the case, that is not going into the decision.
I mean, he, he did say he talked to you about dressing up his existing building more to eliminate sidewalks. So that's one thing he told me.
Okay, so that would certainly be about.
It would be.
Right.
So, I mean, there again, I would think of it as significant, we didn't, I didn't offer as an option, I didn't say, hey, sure, hey, that'd be a great idea. I mean, it just, it was very casual conversation. However, it was very recent that he was here and I didn't talk.
Right, and, and his decision was terrible, and so that's still a decision that will come back to work, um.
And we did just talk with him slightly after the meeting, I believe, two last meeting, when he was here. Not maybe much, but he didn't say wrong for a minute. But again, that was after the meeting.
Sure, and I guess there was more, probably three of us here.
Like when you're saying report, is it like a email or something like that that you'd write to? Would it be Karen or would it be Glenn or who gets this report? Do you want the report?
It could be a verbal report, is what, when you ask, how, how does this?
I mean, it's easier to email probably and find one of you, you know?
Right, you could email Karen, say, this could go in the reports section of the.
Like spoke to Jeff, we actually discussed sidewalks.
But it almost.
He was suggesting this, I think it's a great idea, but this is, I want to make sure that the rest of the.
And this was what was said?
This is what was said, I think that needs.
It almost needs to go a third party though, because we send it to each other, then we're violating the open meetings act, aren't we? Because we're discussing.
Well, I was just sending it to Karen, I didn't send it to you.
Yeah, I was just saying, you should go to a third party that's not on the commission, probably.
It's complicated.
And I would say most of the time, you just mentioned the hearing, say, you know, I did discuss this with so and so.
Yeah, we just bring it out.
And they clarified some information I didn't know.
To me, we didn't theoretically discuss anything, I offered no options, but I mean, still, he told me, but we didn't.
What you worry about bylaws and some of these things, if you get too definitive, people use it against you when something doesn't go well. So that's the question a little bit, is we don't want something in here that's going to come back to haunt us.
I certainly did not mislead him and, oh, that's not a great idea, let's, let's make that work, no, no, we didn't discuss that at all. But that wasn't my intent, so.
Sure.
It was all pretty casual.
I'm almost wondering if you want to leave B out of there, just so it does discuss it, not to do, but not to get definitive what we have to do about it. You know what I'm saying, because again.
You're saying, take the part out about the reporting, or?
Yeah.
So.
Again, I don't think it's a problem, but if somebody doesn't like a decision we make, they could come back and say, well, you talked to so and so outside the meeting and that was a violation of your bylaws.
And it was not reported.
And it wasn't, yeah, and it was not reported. And you might have done it very innocently, like Ray claims he was. Anyway, I just wonder, again, bylaws should be something pretty broad and open, so it doesn't hold you too tightly, just the, uh, the kind of framework where you work within, so.
Right, right. Well, what I was going to mention about the report is that it says report, I think that is a key part of this, which is why it has to be taken out altogether, because it's sort of saying, we know that these conversations will happen. When they stop into your store, we can't avoid it, but when that does happen, reporting it can reduce the opportunity or chance that there could be a conflict of interest. And so, I think the, you know, of course, I didn't realize when I was writing these that we have three members not here tonight. And I think that it's important that they also weigh in. I don't think that we need to, you know, we need to approve these next month as well, I think it's.
Well, I think we make changes and then let them discuss it further in the next meeting to prove, is what I say.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, absolutely, exactly. I'm not suggesting that we're sorry, I just.
Pardon? Ray wants to say them next meeting, let them come.
The key to the, to this whole, the ex parte is the fact that if you report in any fashion, whether it be written or verbal, it makes it out there so everyone in the committee is aware, and that's the safety net. That's the net that protects everybody, so that if somebody, a petitioner hears this or it doesn't, all of a sudden this shows up and there's someone on the panel that doesn't understand what's going on, well, this all happened here, then you have a problem where you're just avoiding that by, whether you verbalize it at the meeting, the next meeting, or you send an email, just making sure the rest of the panel is aware that this conversation happened and this was what this was discussed. And obviously, we have to protect ourselves as well by not giving any solutions or options, because that's, we're not in that position. We don't have that ability or right to do it, only when we're sitting here together collaboratively. So I think that the safety net, and I, I, I think you're on track, but we want to keep it in, because it's just, the reporting is only just making it aware for everybody to know that that conversation happened to happen. Small town, again, we're going to all run into them at one point or another before the next meeting. That's, in a small town, that, that is going to happen. So, I, I think you're okay with it, it's just, the, the word reporting is only to make aware for the panel to have knowledge prior or at the next meeting, so that they know what happened.
Maybe take the word report out and put make aware.
Yeah, and it could be, again, something for Karen to, as an email, then she might put it on the agenda that this, this conversation happened. We want to make everybody aware so that they understand that it happened. Not right or wrong, it's just letting everybody know.
I don't know whether that would be.
Yeah.
Would that be a good tag?
Well, we can also do.
You know, because it would normally be up here, it would be discussed.
You'd be up.
You'd need to be forwarding that to everyone.
Yeah, because then it's already down and then you just say, oh, by the way.
Session on the agenda at the next day, just be specific about what we.
Could, could do that. Or, or maybe suggestion, make it as a IE, you could report these ways, so that it gives direction without constraint. So by. So by doing that, it allows us to bring it up, you could literally have a me, a conversation two hours before the meeting, we don't have time to get that to you. The agenda's already been created, so then you just bring it up in the, at the beginning of the meeting.
But.
So you give them the options of, you could do it this way, this way, or this way, as long as it's hap, it happens and you don't swallow it and then ends up being an issue.
So is there a way to like move reports maybe more earlier, like before new business, so then we don't? Yeah, I don't know, just because if we say any, any, or is that?
You just report when you're on the subject, it's not like a report that you're reporting like on the agenda.
Right.
You're just making a report that I.
Well, just.
Making everyone aware.
It gave you an opportunity, you know, if it was on the agenda.
Yeah. So it's not a report item, line item, you're reporting when you get to that.
Figure to group it all in.
It also comes to timing too, we don't deal with that, because he talked about crane, heating, cooling, it's not on agenda now. Would he make that acknowledgement now, at this meeting or before, or would it just be when we, the, Kim's back up for?
Now, now, it's in the minutes, and say, if true is insignificant, I'm not, I'm not trying to make this a big deal.
No, I, I like your example though, it tells you.
It is, it's a perfect same example of what we're talking about here.
Yeah.
Right.
The fact that, I mean, we did talk, it was a very short conversation, I mean, very short.
And even though he's not here tonight, as a petitioner, it's still by having that conversation, bringing it up, you're acknowledging it to the panel, and that's what's important, is that everyone that knows it, that's.
You can report if you want.
Right.
Right, I think what kind of, what we're all getting at is that there's a couple of different ways to go about reporting this. Either by email, which could be included in the packet if it's in advance far enough.
Right.
If it's right before the meeting, and the, if I have this on the agenda, then that's the time to do it. And, you know, again, I think to one's point, if we add only a couple of options on kind of reported, it could paint us a different order. Um, but I think it'll be important, the bylaws, again, we want them to be specific enough, but we'll wanna make sure that in practice, as we're applying this, everyone is on the same page on how we're applying them, so. So I'll, I'm making notes, yeah, what I can do is.
They also worry a little bit, is Ray's example to me, I don't think enough was discussed, but it's, doesn't give a degree here, what point, what, what point? Is it necessary to make a report or to discuss that you talked with it?
I mean, it was, it was very simple conversation, but we are talking about it, so, I mean, it was, we, we didn't discuss anything far as, you know, what I thought would be good, what he thought would be good, in fact, you know, he had talked to you, that was, that was it.
Sure.
So I would think for the most part, to me, it's like, it's a non-reportable event usually, but there again, maybe it is.
But again, try and keep it broad, so it doesn't pain us, and doesn't this also deal with Open Meetings Act, isn't that somewhat? And I'm wondering if we don't, you know, need to look at what's already there, because that's law, and make sure we're not doing something more than we need to or something that conflicts with what their rules are.
Yeah, so thank you for bringing that up, I wanted to make a point about that, so under, on the first page, one of the laws that I added is to Open Meetings Act, so without having a written penalty, the Open Meetings Act is getting more at the board itself having closed meetings without the knowledge of the public, without an opportunity for the public to observe, to chime in. Um, so again, when I was writing the ex parte section, I'm thinking more about with the comments whereas the Open Meetings Act covers both each other.
This would be between the, the commission.
I think that the ex parte, if it's, if you're discussing about agenda items, is, is really where we're concerned about. If you two are having dinner and nothing about training comes up, that's different. And we can make the language more clear on that, I, I, the point's well taken that we should be more specific so that you all have clear direction of what's allowed and what's not, so I am taking notes and I can tweak this and then when we come back next month see, you know, what you think about realized language, but, um.
You probably thought this was gonna be an easy thing to go through, right?
I was hoping so.
But this is why, this is why we do this, right, because you're making it differently as commissioners than I am as the planner, and so it's, it's helpful. So anything else on that?
I wanna go back one section.
Sure.
Um, it would be C with a little e on that top on that same page. It, in here talks about, um, that you shouldn't, um, be involved in cases where you own or has financial interest in neighboring properties. Neighboring properties, for me, limits considerably, because I own quite a bit of property and there's a lot of property that touches my. Derek Summer was very interested in probably on the board because of what was happening across the road, that would be a neighboring property for him. I worry a little bit that that's also confining, if you have a business.
And the last few of them have been around me.
Yeah, Ray deals with a lot of people between his, you know, anyway, I'm just looking at, that could be kinda confining there.
Property of your gate.
I think you have to ju, use judgment on it, but I was just worried that it might be a little too confining to put that in there. And then a little bit further down there is actually they have to cease to participate in the meetings and could leave the meeting, which I thought was a little harsh, I thought, you know, because there'd be other things at the meeting they might need to be here for, so it's, it'd be very strange. I thought before they just would abstain from voting, I didn't think we had to go to the point where they actually had to leave the, had table here, but.
Yeah, but you said you weren't supposed to participate in the conversation and not vote, because I, I questioned George on some things too, because, yeah, I could have conflict.
Yeah.
Like we've done several things, but I discussed with George and we decided I didn't have a conflict, maybe that was inappropriate, we didn't discuss that with George, but, you know.
Yeah, that's an E, I just thought that was a little stronger than needed to be for, you know, not participating too, so.
So you're that.
The little e up there first, yeah, yeah.
So this one is actually already in the bylaws, so the black text, the.
Doesn't mean it's good.
Sure, of course, I just, I love to be fit, this is, again, a very standard thing to have in bylaws. One of the commentary from Michigan State University was that in some bylaws, they will even go as far as to say neighboring properties within X number key or even quarter mile, uh, and the commentary was that in a small town, you don't wanna be out there, it took exactly what you're concerned with. Now, to make it less intensive, I think I'd like to at least understand what that would mean. I may, you know, I'm kind of thinking now as well, Karen, that perhaps we should have a township attorney take a look at all of these before they are adopted, because what all of this is getting at is trying to protect you all in township at the end of the day from any potential renovation or, uh, you know, and, and that goes for forever, right, you could have settled on a case ten years ago that someone brings up, and so, um, I'll make a note about that one, I think that I'm hesitant to offer a renovation without understanding what that might do, you know, especially because it's part of the existing bylaws. Um, but I will certainly.
I just worried it was very limiting, or could be, again, if somebody was to use it against us, say, well, you shouldn't have discussed that, you should have been part of that decision because your property is neighboring to the one discussed.
That wouldn't be happy.
Yep.
It's yours all good.
Yep, Derek would not be happy if he couldn't discuss the fact that they come back to the campground across the, the road from him, because that's probably why he got involved in fact, so.
Well, and that's a great point, so what's, in some ways, the inherent purpose of this is to make sure that when someone has such an investment, personally, financially, whatever it be, falling within one of these categories, they're not allowed to vote on it, but that's also why we have a seven floor, um, that's impossible. So if one member is a neighbor property owner, and that counts as a conflict, they're not able to vote on it. We still have six other members that can vote on it in unbiased manner. And so, again, that's why I'm very hesitant to take that out completely.
Yeah, I don't think you should.
I take a look and see if there's, you know, alternatives that still, again, protect the township while not being so strict that we end up in a case where everyone's not, right, because it is a small town, you guys own large tracts of land and it touches a lot of.
Not, not all of us guys, just some.
Of course, yes, yeah.
So an E, the big E down there too, that was B and C, I just thought that was more restrictive than it needed to be. Again, before I thought we just abstained from either talking or from voting on the issue, but was still sat at the table and whatever, I just thought this is almost too limiting.
So under, so there's a big E and then on the little C under that.
Yep.
It talks about having a leave of meeting or remove oneself from the front table, day of sitting in, um, until that agenda item is concluded, because part of the conflict of interest is that, as an applicant would say, it's, it's the campground, for example, and you have a direct neighbor deciding on what you can do with your property, that's a clear conflict, right? Because he gets at his property values, but it's his right to petition the board for certain things that are allowed through this ordinance. So having him declare this conflict of interest, the neighbor come up and go sit in the audience takes away, it's almost a intimidation type thing, right?
It doesn't go further, but he, could he then speak as part of just a member of the public? The hearing? You remove yourself from the commission.
You should be able to have that.
And maybe you don't wanna put that in there, but I just wondered how far that goes.
Because if you're a neighbor or something, that's what neighbors do.
Because, you know, that would be.
There was enough public at that, I mean, that'd be hitting more. But realistically, that'd be both you and Derek, they're both here.
It's just switching hands.
I don't touch that property, very close, but. Touches, um, the one that owns that property, but not that property we're discussing the campground.
So for example, in some bylaws, the distance that this bylaws includes on three hundred feet, which is the same distance as the property notice. So if you wouldn't have known that there's a special plan use, then that would count, but if you are in those, as I have, the whole purpose of the public notice is that the neighbors in the general vicinity understand what's happening right next door. And if it's the case of a special plan use, the township is not required to approve it. There, it's a discretionary approval if they meet certain criteria, and a lot of that criteria has to do with being harmonious with the surrounding area. So then you're getting into, well, is it harmonious with my personal property and that's a conflict of interest? And so I think the question about can I still speak as a member of the public, I would think yes. I will double check, and if that's the case, I'll make us all aware of that, because this could very well happen in the future, in the near future, so.
I'd very, very like to happen, actually.
Yes, so I will.
Yeah, because I have a question about that, because what could be, because you took on the responsibility of, of being on the panel or the commission, if you have a conflict of interest, I, unfortunately, I'm thinking that they're not able to speak because they're on, they would have to recuse themselves from the planning commission, I, I think, what you're gonna find, I may be wrong, but because it, your public right changes the day we take this position in the respect of we are now here for the people, not for our own personal opinions per se. And so even though we may have a tract of land that's abutting some development that we agree or disagree, we're not supposed to have an influence on it. Only in, are we doing the right thing for the community, and I think that, that as, if you were just a landowner, you would have the right to come up and speak for or against and have an opinion and have the ability to speak why you think it's good or bad. But if you're on the, on the commission, I think that has, that you lose some of that, if I'm not mistaken. I mean, that's part of why you would recuse yourself in that decision-making, because you have a greater con, you have a greater concern, um, because you are within that vicinity of that, say, that, that property is an example. I'd be interested to find out on that, I really would, because that would, we just wanna make sure we go down the right road. Really, because that's more applicable in a smaller community than it would be in the city. It, it would be way more applicable here, I would almost think.
Well, and the, the way that I think about it is that when, when you are on the data, it's part of why it's important that they either step out of the room or to step off the data, is that when you're up there, you are serving for the public as a commissioner. I would be surprised if that also means that you guys have no opportunity to speak as a resident.
As a neighbor, yeah.
Say, if there's a special plan use going next door, like you're very concerned about, so I will.
And maybe, and I, again, I may be totally wrong on that, but it's, something's ringing in my head about only because you take on that, your opinion is superseded by the opinion of the people, that's what you're working for. There's something in my head that's telling me about that, and I don't know, I just, I wish I could pull it up and tell you what I remember, but I'm, something's running in the back of my head about that and I don't know if that's true or not, but that'd be a good one to find out, just make sure we're on the right page.
And you know what, what are we considering a neighbor, is it three hundred feet from the property line, or what is, how are the rules?
So, I know there's no specific footage or.
Would it just, yeah, could, I mean, just, you know, because is it, uh, is it Trilogy, is that what it was, or the health, right? I can see that property and I can also see Crane from my business, like even Crane, that building, I can look right at that building.
But you just leased the property.
Right, I just leased the property, I don't own it, but, but I've been still, I.
Still with financial interest in it.
But is there, yeah, I just didn't know, is that, am I over here or am I in the audience, am I a neighbor? You know what I mean, like, what do you want, exactly?
And again, you don't want anything too confining in this definition, but we do need to know where we stand, I guess.
So did you get a letter when they were, when we had Cranes here last month, did you have a letter?
I had a, a letter for.
About land use, special land use.
Yeah, I think I seen it came, but I didn't know that I was a direct neighbor. I know how the rules work.
I think that's what the language says now.
Well, let's just say, if you're within three hundred feet, you'll get a letter.
I seen the special land use.
To me, that would be almost, I mean, even though it's not in here, that would make sense.
Oh, because did, did the business get a letter?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, right, right.
Did the business get a letter, the fact that, I'm assuming you would have sent those out, right?
Right, I'm not sure actually, I had to check with Jesse, but I don't think I seen that.
If you're three hundred feet, you might be more.
I think I might just be more than that, but like, you know, how it affects the traffic and everything on that road and what's going on, and you know, it's a, you know, I'm just seeing the Trilogy, healthcare, whatever, different things going on, and, you know, on Crane, I, you know, I could look at this every day.
We all have those issues, because.
We do, I mean, it's, you're all up, it's your fault.
Yeah, sorry. Got the wheels turning.
Well, I mean, you know, when the settlers are coming back, I mean, that would be, you'd be a total conflict there, that's right across the street.
Right, right, yeah.
So. We need, yeah, we need clarification.
But they all need cars.
It's your fault.
So, under E, which is specifically a member of all whose owners financial interest in the waiver by
Financial interest, so.
purposes of this subsection, a neighboring property shall include any property falling within the notification radius.
Right.
Okay.
Which is the three hundred feet.
I don't think I did.
Um, now again, the guidance from Michigan State said that that may not be the right fit for other communities. There are communities of three hundred people where everyone is a very much, right? So it becomes very difficult to avoid all of this. Now, this is also where it becomes important with the ex parte contact, that everything is out being open and it's all on table, and so I will.
So would rule of thumb be like if I received a letter at the business, then in that case I would be in a conflict of interest and then I'd excuse myself?
As the written, um, yes.
Okay.
But if he were, if he wasn't the landlord of the business, he would necessarily know it, if you just, I just use the example. If he just leased the business, he wouldn't necessarily know if somebody got a letter.
But don't I, I have financial interest in, yeah, in the company leasing the property.
By the way, I'm just saying, it could get more complicated.
Does that mean that he's automatically eliminated, or do you, would the board vote on that in that case? And I mean, if the board voted on it, then probably the advocate would have to say it was okay too, so I mean, it'd have to. So I mean, it had to be like between the applicant and the board to say it was okay for him, right?
What do you mean?
Well, I mean, say he said, hey, I have this conflict of interest, it's a hundred feet across the road.
Yeah, I, I received a letter or something like that, you know.
He received a letter, and the applicant was here, I mean, would he just automatically sit down? Or would, should we discuss it and say, decide if it was okay or not, but would, they would have decided it was okay also, I assume?
So.
Cause I mean, there'd be, I mean, there's tons of conflicts to enter, I mean, you know, I.
Potential.
Everybody come here, theoretically, I can saw a lot of people stuff, all my children saw stuff to these people that come in here to get things split up. And I mean, that would be a benefit to me, none of it necessarily borders any of my property, but it still could be a benefit for me. But, I'm not saying that, again, I had this conversation a long time ago, we decided it was not a conflict, but we're talking about it.
Yeah, so, under the large D on the same page, it says that there's a question, whether a conflict of interest exists or not.
We can all load on it.
The question shall be before the commission, whether a conflict exists or not shall be determined by a majority vote of the remaining members of the commission.
Okay.
So the person who there's a potential conflict with wouldn't vote, if it's a conflict or not, but it would be put to the commission.
Right. But just because we all thought that it was okay, Ben stayed, but then he got in a fight with whoever built him across the road, but didn't, didn't want them there, or whatever.
Yeah, right.
Right.
Wouldn't they still have that as an option saying, hey, those members was right across the road and he's been caused, you know, he's the one that made it so I didn't get this passed?
I'm.
Correct.
Yeah.
I would like to think we're all unbiased here, but you know, still.
Yeah.
The sad part to me is, I would want Ben to be here to discuss Trilogy or the, um, Subusion.
Because I'm in the men's of the woods.
Or Crane, because you know the situation, he's close to it, knows the traffic, knows the issues that you're gonna have with the hell, all those things.
Right.
We don't necessarily know that like he would, that's the part that's sad, we can't.
And that's why I'm thinking that if you do recuse yourself, you declare your conflict, that you would be able to come in as a member of a, as a member of a public.
Okay.
Just think about those things, because you're exactly right, that's.
I can just go to the other microphone.
The whole purpose of the whole here, so that we can get feedback from folks in that general vicinity.
Good, very good, right.
Right. Get feedback from home.
Um, the way that this is recorded, to your original question, it is on you all as commissioners to declare it. If someone else is questioning it, it would be home of discussion of the board.
You put on it.
If it's borderline, I think that's where this deliberation case comes in.
Then make a decision.
Yeah.
It's very clearly, he is the direct adjacent neighbor, which is how some bylaws are worded. It's, it gets away from the public noticing, uh, language and only refers to neighboring properties as directly adjacent. So, you know, I think what I'm going to do is take notes, feedback taking on these notes, and look at the best practice guidance again and try and do some more research on other rural communities, because like you said, it'll be very different, these wouldn't be as concerning potentially. Um, so, what, how do we feel about that, are there any other red flags, like you want me to run down?
Get that, again, you kinda want something that's still pretty broad, so it doesn't tie us too much, but we do need guidelines, cause we all have questions, if you notice.
No, I think the. Yeah.
Of course, of course, so.
And my question too is, if a member of the public gets up at the hearing and says, Ben has a conflict, he shouldn't be up there in the board with you at that time. Is that gonna be proper, or should we address that at all in this?
I would think we would wanna, as a commission, we would wanna address it, discuss it, and.
It talks about, but it doesn't talk about who brings it up, whether it's a conflict.
Yeah, I mean.
And I think that's intentional, because it could be someone on the township board, it could be a member of the public, it could be an applicant himself.
Right.
Having it discussed in a public, open setting by the commission, that's also intentional, because it's getting it all in the table.
Okay, yeah.
It, it kind of goes back to speaking to the intent of the open meetings, that's to your question originally, which is, again, we're not having closed door decision making behind scenes deals happening, right?
Right.
Um, it, the whole purpose of this process and the commission itself is so that there is an unbiased decision making body going off of the township zoning ordinance, especially if you're something that's permitted by right, there is a set criteria and that's that, it should be very clear cut. Um, of course, with the discretionary decisions, that's where it can become a lot more gray, which is why we want to be very clear in bylaws about all of these things. So, I've got my marching orders on this side, and so again, some of what's in this training talks more about conflict interest. Um, but I think it's also important that the other, we'll, we'll get into that, but we want to make sure that everyone's on the same page about, like you said, just what is the procedure? What are we supposed to do in these cases, so.
Okay.
Okay, do we want to move on to officers as the next session?
Sure.
This has largely remained the same under officer duties, but just add some organization there. Um, now where I did get more specific is on Glenn, to your point, what are, what are the duties of the chair? What are the duties of vice chair and what are the duties of secretary? What are, what comments or questions do you have on this? A lot of this things that you were already doing.
Yep.
Just written down, but there were some new things.
Under D, I think it should start out with saying, um, the secretary may delegate the duty of township staff, cause that's an important thing. It's in there, but it's down under C, I think it is, yeah. And it looked like more, I wasn't sure what he went, but, um, it's under C, it says review the draft in minutes, sign them, which I don't think we've done, is actually the board commission's done that. Submit their approval and have them spread in a suitable volumes, wasn't sure what we were talking about there. Or what, what our secretary needed to do in that case, I guess. So anyway, mainly I wanted to see that really, cause secretary job is mainly done by the township officials or deli, yeah. So I just thought that should be part of the heading almost.
Board this, so it's changing, Ben.
Maybe, maybe what Ben doing all those things.
Oh, man.
It looked like you have a much bigger job once you read.
Don't have too much time, it was like, come with the rays, no.
So, I think, to your question about, shall have them spread in suitable volumes, is really just a way of saying, they need to be distributed.
Mm-hmm.
From my view, this is a case where you want it to be broad, because as time goes on, that practice of how we distribute those, you know, Karen emails the packets. She also mails them physically, um, we've got the website where we post them, it's after they're crewed. That's kind of what it's like, you know, without having to list all of those steps out.
Right.
Um, those practices may also change, we never know, it's had, kind of technology might have in the future, or what manner in which they will be distributed. But the important thing is that they are distributed. I think the note about should delegation to township staff be more, uh, highlighted, absolutely, we can make that change, that's, you know.
I think it would be in the beginning of that, instead of right in the middle of it.
Mm-hmm.
So I thought, boy, Ben's not been doing his job when I started reading that. So I got, oh, we could does it, we could.
Yes, told me in the beginning, I didn't have to do it.
And Ray didn't do his job either.
Man.
Utah.
That's like this, communities all operate differently in human reality, right?
Yeah.
So, um, so of those notes, let's see, I think that would be, what else in this section, what other comments or questions? So, in the next section, it talks about decisions. Um, the first, section four point one, just updating formatting. Second, talking about a quorum, I put four, and I have simple majority, this can sometimes become a question of, what does a majority need? Because we have a seven number four, the majority is four, um.
But if there's a member that's deceased or something, that is not a full seven member, that wouldn't necessarily be four then, correct? Say that somebody passed away just before the next meeting we had, then we wouldn't have seven members in the commission.
Well, you would still have seven positions.
Physicians, yes.
So, even if they're not all filled.
Okay, alright.
Um, I don't think, do we cover any alternates? No, okay, so they, they, I don't think they, um, that provided by law.
Yeah, there was something, a reason we couldn't have alternate, cause that was my original job, I was gonna be an alternate.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And that didn't work. It's out of the hood, you. Hey, if you had a discussion, it was somehow, yeah.
You were an alternate for one or two meetings before you found out you couldn't be, I think.
No, I never show up, no, it was, it's a long story, but in medical, probably, about the time I was supposed to show up.
Oh, okay. Oh, yeah.
I think we just turned that fully moving, uh, the next couple of sections are mainly formatting updates. There is one new, um, section under annual report, that the secretary of the commission may delegate the annual report to township staff. Uh, this is something that we've done for a couple of years, the annual planning report, of course, secretary of the commission hasn't prepared that. It's been the zoning administrator with our assistance, so, um, just to add a bit, that it can be delegated to staff. And then, those are all substantive changes that I got here, so there are no other questions.
Now, under meetings, public notice, the way I read public notice, section eight A, is if township clerk doesn't post it within ten days, we can't have a meeting the rest of the year. When you read that, you have to do it in ten days, it doesn't say what happens if it doesn't get done, or alternate. Just, and couldn't even put in there just as, as per law or something like that, perhaps would just clear it up, but, um, the way I look at it, if clerk was, um, out of town on vacation for those ten days and didn't get done, we just wouldn't, couldn't have meetings legally.
Well, you need to post a meeting individually with the.
Yeah, I'm just, you know, that normally happens, but I just thought it was a restrictive time, but if that's the law, with this way of to follow, but I just looks like, it's weird, just, yeah. Ray could distract her for ten days probably, and so we wouldn't have to have any meetings next year.
Well, it says ten days after the first meeting, so really, you have the first meeting first.
Yeah. Yeah, that's right, yeah.
Yeah, it's only after the first meeting of the year, physically or calendar year, and it just has to be done ten days prior, or a meeting can't commence. So, once, once you re-notify, then you can commence to the next meeting, but it's gotta be ten days before. So if you, if we have it scheduled on the, say, the sixteenth, if we don't get the notices out, but they go out two days late, you might have to move it to the next week in order to make it ten days compliant, that's my understanding of it, is that, or miss it, go to the next month, so that the notice goes out ten days prior, right?
Well, I made a note, just to either add something about which they want to refer to, or, you know, in the event of that, or what, what is the procedure?
Again, these are kind of broad kind of things, that seemed very specific, and if the, if somebody in the public noticed it wasn't done properly, then all of a sudden, are we legal for the rest of the year almost, based on that one?
Right.
So. We did read these over, if you noticed.
I, I just wanted to, I didn't want to waste for something, mother star.
I think else before we, you know, just.
I did not, I didn't have anything, um, I had a note, but I don't know. Why was removed under, well, parliamentary process, that whole section was removed.
Yes, so.
I guess you had that in the beginning, is that why, I didn't think it's that time, okay, alright, sorry.
That's okay. Yes, and because we're not recording, I'm sorry, we think about anything, we've got next month, so, um, two of this thing. And was it the beginning of this year, did you repair it some binders, is it January, February?
Yeah. March.
Okay.
Might've been March.
Yeah, March, yeah.
Yeah, it seems like it was about March.
It's binding.
That's great, that's nice.
I didn't bring mine when I first.
Brown-noser. Mine's my bag.
I just wanna look like I'm paying attention.
So, in those binders was a copy of this training, which is intended to essentially cover the, in a high level, it's seventy slides, but
Mm-hmm, remember it.
most of what you should need as a planning commissioner, what you should need to know, what is our charge here, why are we here? And so, I'm gonna scroll through, what I've done is highlighted a couple of things to review tonight, but you have a copy of this. They did that intentionally, so that as we're reviewing things, I'd like to start doing this ever so often. Um, this is something you already have got in your binder, you can go back and refer to it. So, what we wanted to talk about tonight, uh, especially after last month's meeting, there were a lot of questions about, when it comes especially to a discretionary decision, like a special land use. What can happen and can we require, what can we waive, things like landscaping, the ordinance, does not currently have any type of section or listing about having the planning commission waive something like that. And so, throughout the slides, again, you already have a copy of these, and I just highlighted the things that we're focused on tonight, so I won't go through every single slide. Kind of already been talking about some of this stuff tonight, as we went through the bylaws, but these are just the basics, stuff we've already done through. Um, what I was gonna say also about binders is that we would love if you brought them to every meeting, because the idea was that it's your toolbox, it's your, the master plan, the zoning law, things like that are all in there, so that you can reference that in the news. So, let's, first one, one I talked about was when we're deliberating over site mans. These previous slides talk about generally what the site man is, what the processes, which I think we're all familiar about, but please stop me if you have questions. Um, but what we wanted to talk specifically about is, again, when you're making decisions, what is up for discussion and what is it? If there is a site man that needs, it's permitted by right in that district, and meets all the applicable standards, then you're required by state law to approve it. There may, you're still allowed and required to go through the process of having to apply, it's not like they can automatically do something, we still go through that reviewing process that's outlined on the previous page. But, if we come to that conclusion that they have met all of those standards, that it's actually illegal to deny them, because what the township is saying is that here is our set of criteria, inlook, because this is our local law. If someone is needing it and you still say no, then it would technically be going against our whole local ordinance. So I wanted to highlight that we haven't really had any of those cases in the world, we've only had few this year, we've both done discretionary, but, um, in addition to that, talking about conditions to impose, so if it's, for example, from last month, um, my recommendation was to approve on the condition that sidewalk requirement is determined, whether that's now, later, if it's burned, the size that needs to be, et cetera. Um, but we wouldn't necessarily recommend putting a condition that he sell half of his property to the township for the purpose of, of a local three-point plan or something like that. The conditions that you place on decisions have to do with the review standards themselves, they can't just be for any operating. And so. And further, this third bullet, you cannot require anything other than what the zoning ordinance allows. You can't require someone to go against the local code, right, so, um, with the landscaping requirements, for example. We will be eventually getting to a point of revising those, there was a lot of discussion about it last month, and I'm sure that there will be once we get to that point of, of amending the ordinance, but as it stands, the landscaping requirements are what they are, there is very little, real room, and if we were to say, well, we approve you, but with half of the landscaping requirements, it would be going against the zoning ordinance, and so, we just wanted to kind of hone in on that and help the board have discussion about the site without inadvertently going against your requirements.
So, what about the sidewalks, isn't that part of our policy that sidewalks are in most of this area, or is that still a gray area that we, because that's a big issue with.
So, was the sidewalks the ordinance? That was the, in, within the zoning, the ordinance for that zoning was to require sidewalks at this time, yet there are no sidewalks. And now, I know we're kind of looking into that whole thing, on the whole, and I did, you know, I went on there and looked at it, now, there is a lot of utilities under that one side. You know what I mean, which definitely could be a brand new sidewalk going down, then getting ripped up again, then putting foot down, and then I'm looking at all the residential properties, and it's like, realistically, is this gonna happen without some sort of grant, and without township or somebody else funding it, and then getting easement signed by all of these other resident, these residents? And actually, because there, nobody's gonna pay for this little section for what we're doing, and then also, from what the township on their ordinance and what, or zoning and everything, we don't even know what kind of sidewalk we're looking at, me now, looking at it, now actually going out and looking at it, seeing what trilogy everybody's doing, yeah, I think asphalt, going from the boat launch area,
More of a trail.
Going up, yeah, you know, going, yeah, like a trail, like a bike trail, going to Seven Lake State Park, asphalt makes sense.
More like a trail.
Now, the other sidewalk, that's going on the south side of, you know, Grange Hall Road, there's, I don't see how that's ever even gonna get accomplished from all of the different, like the storage units, and all of the other businesses and everything else in between, now, the north side of the road, I think it's a real possibility. I think we can continue that sidewalk, we can connect that corner right at, uh, I'm sorry, Charlie, is it LaFawn, or, or, yeah, whatever that is, right there, that corner. That, that seems like that is a possibility to connect that there, but on the other side, actually looking at it, I don't even know if it's a reality, you know? But then, how, what, how are we able to even help with that decision if it's just an ordinance and we can't touch it, and too bad, so sad, put a sidewalk in there, you know, like, how does that work?
Yeah, so, those are all great questions.
You know?
Trying to think of where to start, so, I think that the sidewalks is a challenge, because we have a couple of different things that we need on, the master plan, the ordinance, um. The master plan very clearly designates that intersection as where we want to see a safety path. Now, a safety path has a different connotation than a sidewalk, right, a safety path in engineering reading standards gets out what you're describing as a trail, um.
Okay, the wider one, yep.
It's a little wider than a sidewalk, it's typically asphalt, um, and, but, at the same time, the ordinance is great. It's very clear that within that area as well, because that area is also within the Grange Hall, Fish Lake, Overlake District, so there's even additional standards beyond the site plan and special man use standards, there's a focus in that Overlake District on pedestrian interactions.
Mm-hmm.
But it doesn't specify, doesn't need to be asphalt, concrete, five feet wide, eight feet wide, and that's where we've been working with the township engineer on
Mm-hmm.
to find is this even feasible to the connections to the south that we, that the master plan is calling for.
Yeah.
And, you know, because we don't want to acquire so much as something that, like you said, will never go anywhere, or will get ripped up because it can take days.
Right.
And so, with that, when you start getting ones that are designed on us, if it's required, which as it stands, it's very clear that it's required, it's just the, how there is it required.
Right.
If it's required, it is up to the property owner to figure out based on the requirements, which at the time, right, how to make that happen.
Right, and.
So, for example, um, we've been working with the applicant, I know you said Jeff, said he spoke with me, we've been working with him and the township engineer on where could this go, can we see it on the plans, because as the planner and as the township, we don't necessarily have the, all of the surveys and, you know, CAD files that are necessary to understand truly specifically on site, where it could and couldn't go, but it's also on the property owner. So, part of what I'll get into with some of these other slides is that, in this instance, it's, it's also a special use, and he also, and I didn't necessarily highlight this as much of class, maybe, which I will clarify whenever it comes back up, it's a non-according, maybe that's not right, right? He never got a site plan or special use approval for that use, so it's been illegally operated.
Mm-hmm. Right, but.
He's reported to, in a perfect world, it would then, he's looking at that property, understands that it's a special use, that he needs site plan approval. Part of going through and getting a special use permit is getting the site plan approval and bringing the sidewalk to standard, so in terms of, there's no sidewalks anywhere for it to connect to right now. Every time that there is a reapplication or a site man coming to the commission, it's an opportunity to bring it up to court.
Yeah.
And that court will require a site.
But, I guess would be like, is it, is there a possibility of like, it's in the site plan, both of them, he has the asphalt one going this one, he has the concrete one going this way?
Yeah, that's.
Right, and then let's say that, um, we can get, I don't know if it'd be too early to have like an easement for the township, like, they, he has an easement sign saying that, no, if you guys wanna run a sidewalk, just go right ahead, so it's, it's locked in to that property, so if it is happening, it could happen. Or, and maybe require him to do the, the one going to the party store in concrete, because we don't know what's going on with utilities and all the asphalt and stuff like that yet. It, do we even have the capability to do anything like that, or is it just, it's an ordinance, sorry, you gotta have sidewalks, so, figure it out, you know?
Yeah, so, no, that's a great question, in terms of the easement, it's very common where, in an ideal world, the sidewalk would be within the road in the right of way, so technically, within the public realm, it's,
Yeah.
um, the township would already have.
Okay.
Not necessarily ownership, but it has access.
Okay.
They are able to access and maintain that, um, if there isn't a road within the right of way, and it has to go on private property, there would be, we would have to have an easement.
And that's when it goes to like the private properties, so being on the commercial, since it's a commercial property, there, you guys are able just to run the sidewalk, I guess. Uh, you know, being in like a residential, you'd have to get an easement signed by the resident, right, to.
Um. It would, it would be for both, so it's, it's really about private property owner, whether it's commercial or residential, they own that property.
Yeah.
If there's a sidewalk running through the purpose of public, when that happens, when that's established, we would require an easement to possibly be established, because
Mm-hmm. Right.
it's being required for a purpose of public use, and if there's no access easement, then it's not really needed out there.
Right, okay.
And so, something like that would be, uh, executed once the site man is approved, we work with township attorney, uh, to have that easement drawn up, and that's very common if you're, uh, it's, there's not a road in the right of way, and so there's an easement, and it's, that's a pretty common practice, um, and so, but, what we talked a lot about last time was, with the sidewalk network in particular, it is a challenge, because you have to start somewhere, and there are some areas that already have dead-end sidewalks, and you can see it's just a longer road, and that's it.
Yeah.
And, part of why we want to get away from deferring that requirement is because it will continue to be a concern at all, there's nowhere for it to factor
But.
until we start to require it, as sites change, you know, a party store is a party store now, when there is a point where a site man is required, whether that's a change in use, a special use, someone, they wanna tear it down and build something new, we require them to come up to code and set them a sidewalk, and they're probably also, for that site, changes in terms of
Yeah.
a lot of things, right, we know, part of what's challenging here for us is that there are a lot of existing non-accordings, or just, not necessarily non-according, but just product.
Mm-hmm. Right. But. I guess I'd wanna see like, I'd, I had to know other examples about how other townships can go on about getting their sidewalks completed, because also, how does it look for Holly Township to have a bunch of incomplete sidewalks here and there and everywhere else? You know, if it is, if it's all just hotch, hotch, bodge for like ten, fifteen years, is that gonna affect the way that people wanna come and buy a house in Holly? Or, you know, and, and is that have some kind of relationship there of, you know, just the way it looks? And then, you know, people from Fettin driving by, yeah, this place has got sidewalks going to nowhere, you know, I'm just being real, you know, it's just.
And one of the things is, which I don't know the answer to at all, is, are there grants, is there ways that some of these could be funded?
That would be planned.
So the people don't have to pay that, so you'd hate to require this guy to pay all this money to put a sidewalk in, and then everybody else next to him just had it done.
Or just.
So my office is down Grange Hall, we're a little ways, they got a grant, I believe it was, to do the sidewalk, and I think it was having to do with low income or something like that, and they put the sidewalk through, and they look, studied most sides of the road there, and I think they just decided it was cheaper, perhaps, or more efficient to do it on my side of the road, but the other side of the road, they did look at quite a bit, but I had no control over it, it was in my right of way, they just did it, so. Um, but, but I didn't pay anything either, it, a lot of residential areas, you pay, and it can be quite expensive, obviously.
Or if it's like a tax thing, everybody pays together.
Yeah, well, a special sus would be in that case, yeah.
I think that it's. In terms of the side, that's good, there's, um, there's, you know, the township kind of established a sidewalk fund, um.
Sorry. That's necessary.
And it really wants, you're thinking about, we're almost getting into township boards territory, right?
Yeah.
Um, actually administrate what would become a public asset, the sidewalk network.
Okay, yeah.
Townships are also different, because you don't want to maintain any of your roads, so you don't have a TPW, you don't have a established, uh, procedure department to maintain something like this, and when you're establishing a sidewalk network, these are all considerations the township will have to make. The other thing is that there are already some sidewalks in Holly, right, so especially within some of the newer residential neighborhoods, Riverside and all of it, and you can see that
Yeah.
at this time, the idea is that, as, again, it's incremental change, so even if the sidewalks go in on this site and sit for ten years, they will be there for when the next guy comes in, and then he installs it, so it, it will take time to build all of this out, but that's also why it's so important to take the opportunity when it comes up, because we all know when the next guy will be, now, all of this is also, again, leaning on the master plan and the zone ordinance. Uh, the zoning ordinance, we will be updating comprehensively, the master plan is reviewed every five years, and when we update the ordinance, it looks to the master plan for, well, where are we going for the next twenty to thirty years, so it is, it's a long-range project and endeavor, and it can be a challenge for places to establish a greater sidewalk network, it's not a simple task, um, but that's also why we're taking the opportunity now to figure all of these things out, so then when the next guy comes in, it's, alright, it has to be five feet wide concrete, it's clearly in the ordinance, we've talked about preparing the ordinance to add more specificity, and that's also why we're working with the township engineer to understand, well, down Fish Lake Road, there are all those conditions, but what do we do in that case, how do we end, how do we fund it, but again, some of this starts to get into the township board, so. I can talk, I can continue to talk about this, but.
I get you.
We're, we're talking about one specific thing, where we probably should go back to this, yeah.
I get you, yeah, we gotta keep going.
But, but, all of that to say, it's a continuing conversation, and this is also why, uh, we're not talking about it tonight, but in this slideshow, it's, I'm not gonna do the next slide, but it's not, but it talks about amending the law ordinance, the planning commission doesn't have a final say on that, all of the amendments to the townships, and to the local convention bureau, to the township board, and they will have additional conversation about, do we wanna go after grants, do we establish a sidewalk fund, things like that, um, and so, you know, it's, we're sort of getting into also how the commission interacts with the township board and the elected officials, so, to kind of continue on with this, this is just, let's see, I'm trying to translate this slide, talking about the discretionary approvals, so in this instance, a special man use. I've already mentioned this, but want to reiterate that these are uses that would not otherwise be created in the district, so when we begin to amend the ordinance, we might add or remove special uses within certain districts, special uses are things that, while it could be compatible in this area, but only if certain things are met, right, so if it's permitted by right, then it's permitted by right, we know it fits, as long as it meets more so design, criteria, setbacks, higher restrictions, things like that, special man uses get more than operation of the things, so for example, hours of operation are very frequently, uh, restricted when it comes to a special use, because if I do so, you can lessen the negative impact on that general area. So, any questions on that?
I just wanna point out that, years ago, when I read some of the ordinances, when it said shall be, or, uh, can be a lot, or can be permitted, I put the word allowed in there, it hasn't, you know, I think it should, with permit instead of permitted, I know that's what you take it as meaning, but when you just read it, it says shall be permitted, or a lot, could be permitted. And that means, I use the word allowed as the same word as permitted, so, that's just a clarification I thought that should show up perhaps for the layperson that doesn't deal with this every time.
And, and that's really why I wanted to review this as well, it, it actually says maybe.
Mm-hmm, maybe allowed, though, maybe allowed.
If it's permitted, it's allowed, so to me, it's.
Doesn't say with permit, that's what I, you know, the way I would read it that way, but that's just me, but.
I see what you're saying, maybe get more clear that.
Clear than what it's, yeah, because if you look at a synonym for permit, it is allowed, and if you put that word in there, it sounds quite different than it is with permit.
The special use permit is required. Sure, well, and.
I assume that's a legal term, and so that's, is used all the time.
Maybe shall, yes, they all have different meanings, right, when you start writing the ordinance, it's also, um, it's.
Yeah.
Again, just another spot I pointed in on, they are reviewed and approved by the planning commission, of course, there's several set of criteria, the ordinance beyond site plan criteria, that you are looking towards, are they being used or not, to help make that decision. So, this one, there's these, going back to conditions, I won't go into all of these bullets in detail, you've got a copy of it, but this is a list of things that you can refer to when a special use comes to the board, and you're trying to understand, could this could be conditioned and require what it is, if you have a certain idea or question, this lays out how to think about conditions, specifically, conditions are things that it's not required right into the ordinance, um, but it's something that, again, hours of operation, we approve the Renaissance Festival on the condition that they close by ten P M or seven P M, whatever that may be, um, so just highlighting some of that additional guidance in. Um, so just having some of that additional guidance in here, that's on slide thirty-four. And sliding through, this is talking about zoning amendments and resellings, which we can continue to talk about in future meetings, but wasn't really the focus for tonight. So, non-conformities, I wanted to talk a little bit about this because non-conformity has a very specific meaning. It's in planning and zoning, it's, um, something that maybe it was built twenty years ago, and at the time, and all of the code requirements, and now it doesn't. Uh, these cannot be by state law, um, expanded, um, if there are, so it mentions the M C A, the Michigan's, or the N A W Act. It allows these non-conformities to continue as they are, because again, they were allowed when they were established. But if they are abandoned, destroyed, altered, expanded, then that's not allowed. Um, any questions on this? This is getting a bit more into variances and zoning appeals, but we have a lot of sites that aren't necessarily up to code right now. They're legal non-conformities. If they continue to operate the same as they are now, that's totally fine. But as soon as they, there are certain triggers that they may be aware of, come on. So, we'll be calling, and this is just more specifics on what an unlawful non-conformity would look like, operating without the approvals or permits, um. And it was just one other section. So, we've already talked about this ad length, but this section is all about managing risk and making good decisions. And making decisions when you stop things that you're supposed to and staying away from things that you're not, so. With planning and zoning, there's often an opportunity, and, and, uh, it was brought up earlier tonight, that, well, someone could call us and say that we didn't follow our own bylaws, and that's not allowed. The idea behind having all of these things in your zoning ordinance, master plan, the bylaws, is to manage the towns, township's risk against liability and litigation. So, the top one out here, avoiding conflict of interest. We wanna do that as much as humanly possible, and we can continue to have that conversation next month when we revisit the bylaws with the full board. But, um, again, that goes back to just protecting yourselves and the township, using consistent rules and procedures. We don't want to waive one person's landscaping, but again, a store is required to plan everything. So, that gets to following the local ordinance the same way for every property.
Is that like some barns don't need a building permit?
You said some barns.
Some barns.
Yes, the idea is that, and it's consistent with other ones, right?
Just wondering.
And, and that just goes for general law, no matter if it's planning or not, right?
I would say so.
Treat everyone fairly, consistently, based on decisions on standards, that's, and not because he bullied you in high school, or, you know. In this section of the slide, I encourage you all to read the meeting, because it talks, if there's a question of, well, not quite sure. There are a lot of good notes in this section, I'll.
I think one of the things important for the board is to discuss what we're limited to in some of these cases. The public comes with the idea that we can do all kinds of things, and a lot of times they're very limited. So, we need to let the public know, at least, you know, that our decision isn't made just on, um, who am at the moment?
Yes.
We are following guidelines that we're required to do, and I don't think a lot of times they understand that, and that's a big problem.
Absolutely. And part of having you all trained and aware of that, so that when you are speaking on things, if you have a large crowd, you can also reinforce that. As a township planner, I can reinforce that as well in my presentations, but they will approach you with questions, and understanding what you kind of can't be disciplined about will help in the long run. It will raise everyone's awareness to, well, we know it's permitted in this ordinance, they have to say it, it's their, and that's the local code. Now, they're in disagreement about what that says. That might require them to get involved in, you know, the boards or, you know, so. We've already talked at this about conflict of interest at length, this is more high level, but, um, I have a note. The addition of the bylaws, don't think we need to talk anymore about that unless you have anything else to add. Again, everything that we've been talking about, we want to base our decisions on ordinances and that's not pans. One of the other things that came up last month was, for example, asking how much are some of these improvements going to cost? That's not necessarily a criteria in the ordinance, right? It's not something that should be one of your considerations, because broadly, it might be a consideration. For example, we don't want to require a legally immediate brick, because it's so expensive, right? We want to be making decisions about what the ordinance is requiring in an informed manner, because that will have real impact on what kind of development comes to Holly. We don't wanna create unnecessary barriers. But when it comes to a specific decision about a site plan, it's really not appropriate to be saying, oh, can he afford this? If he can't, then maybe that's not something that he should pursue. Kind of make these site upgrades, even if someone has been operating for several years, they've been operating without a permit. This is part of getting a permit, is making the site upgrades and bringing it up to code. Questions on that? So, getting a little bit more, again, of conflict of interest. Um, a lot of, again, what's in these slides is to help you guys while you're thinking. So, Ray, I'm so glad that you brought your mind here, we look at something we would like to see. And part of, I think, as we, um, do a follow-up from this meeting, I would like to see everyone start to do that,
It's the one day I forgot.
because it's only gonna help you all in, in your position. Again, more guidance on making decisions, following standards, um. This point about not acting in haste way, um, this is sort of what we did last month by deciding to table the decision. We, you all wanted to resolve certain questions about the dumpster location of the sidewalks, glancing, before we made that final decision, because once it's final, it's final. So, so that was great, and. Some examples of wrong reasons to investigate. So, ordinance is too strict, that's not, if that is the case, if that's what you think, then it should be public discussion on, do we amend the ordinance? Not, well, we, we shouldn't require them to do so. Uh, it's already built. Again, there are a lot of things that are here that don't need Holly's current code. And the sooner that we get that kind of regular code, when we got the opportunity, it's going to make things easier on the property owners as well in the long term, because it's realizing the township's master plan and rendering them no longer non-conforming. Having a non-conforming property is more of a challenge than having something that's permitted or, or up to code, right? Because it's the non-conformity and not allowed to expand, or it's destroyed, you can't rebuild it, and that can become a real concern. So, that is most of what I wanted to cover today. I know that we've kind of been here for a while, right? I think some of you guys are getting, um, a bit tired, and so, what other questions we have? We may have some new business next month, it's not finalized just yet. But, um, for sure, I would have the bylaws and what answers to your questions prepared for next month. Um, if you can answer before we wrap up.
We weren't shy during the time of your presentation, if you did notice.
Well, I really appreciate your, uh, being willing to engage and listen. I just wanna make sure that you guys have what you need to, to serve the board, so.
Yep, thanks Alexis.
Yep, thank you.
All right, reports. Board reports. Nobody has any?
You have nothing, bud?
I have nothing.
You have the voice, that's it.
I have sweet corned flowers for sale, if you want my report.
No, I, I would mention, we tried, I tried that this week, it was sweet.
Okay. Public comment. Nothing to say?
Yeah, I have a lot to say if you don't wanna hear it.
Well, thanks coming to our meeting.
Oh, man.
And with that, then, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Moved by Chuck to adjourn, that's a second.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Ben. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passed, meeting adjourned.